February 26th, Rockham County School Board Meeting to order. I am, thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate everyone that's here, for our guests, for those who will be receiving awards tonight, and for our public. Thank you so much for being involved in our public school system, and thank you for being here with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda tonight is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I mean, if we approve the agenda as presented?
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion approves 5-0. At this time, we will have a moment of silence if you'd like to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. At this moment, we will, if you can arise with us, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will begin our recognition and presentations of the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award, and I believe Ms. Sooters is going to be presenting that for us tonight. Wooters, sorry. Did I say Sooters? Apologize.
Good evening, Chairman Cross, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. Thank you for being here at Hilliard Middle School this evening. We have three individuals that we're going to recognize, and Mr. Martin is going to help me with the recognition. So if I could have Jacob Gilli, Leslie Moreno Hernandez, and Tara Bell and Scout come up to the podium. We'll recognize you at this time. Okay, it looks like maybe our volunteer is not here unless they walk in the next couple of minutes. So I'm going to let Mr. Martin recognize our students.
So I introduce you first to Leslie Moreno Hernandez. When we asked Leslie's teachers to share some things about Leslie, they had a lot of wonderful things to say. It's hard to capture all their thoughts in just a few sentences. I think that the words that they used to describe her say it all. They shared the words kind, helpful, self-motivated, creative, respectful, trustworthy, hard-working, involved, and conscientious. That's quite a list, and of all those words are, sorry, and of all those words are part of the character she possesses that makes her a great friend and amazing classmate. We are lucky to have her as part of our school community. One of her teachers, Ms. Wolfter, says about her, and I quote, "Leslie is a great student. She is always polite and respectful. She is also always willing to go above and beyond to help me as a teacher with anything I need, as well as help other students. She has a strong work ethic and leads by example in helping or in keeping others motivated and on task. She has been a pleasure to have in class." So, thank you, Leslie. And our next recipient is Jacob Gilli. When we asked Jacob's teachers to share some things about him, once again, many great comments were made. Ms. Rulison, his science teacher, said, and I quote, "Jacob Gilli is an outstanding student here at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School. He is always kind to others, works well with all students, and is polite and respectful to everyone around him. Jacob also lives up to the motto, 'All your best, all the time.' He puts in 100% effort into all of his schoolwork, and we can count him to always be on task and working hard in his class assignments. Jacob is a role model to other students both in class and outside of class, and we are so lucky to have him to honor and to teach him this year. Jacob is an outstanding member of our school community, and we love having him." Good job.
We're doing, oh, sorry. We're doing things a little differently, and I'll catch on eventually. But I want to congratulate you all on behalf of the school board, and thank you all for all of your leadership, and for you two to rise to the top, I know is quite an accomplishment because my kids went here, and I know this school pretty well, and there's some really great kids here, and you two are two of the best. And I thank you so much for being a role model for your peers and just leaders in your school. And as a result, we have some pins for you guys. So this, this award is very close to my heart because I actually knew one of the women it was named after, Kelly Coggsdale. So I have a pin for you guys to wear near your heart. So here's one for you, and one for you. And then we also have certificates. Oh, who did you, did you bring people with you tonight? Do you want to tell us who your people are? Are you okay talking on the microphone? Okay, hold on. Do you want to say, do you want to say who they are, or do you want me to say who they are? Okay. Who'd you bring? Yadera, oh my goodness, Moreno Hernandez?
Yeah, take it. Yeah, you're better than I am. I brought Yadera Moreno Hernandez. And my dad.
Can you guys stand? Thank you, thank you very much. And who did, do you want to talk? Do you, okay. Who did you bring?
My mom and dad, my sister, and my grandparents.
Your mom and dad, your sister, and your grandparents. Can you guys please stand up? There you are. And thank you all for bringing, or being here tonight and sending such wonderful kids to J. Frank Hilliard. We know that character begins at home, so thank you all for the, the work you've done to build such great characters for our community. But, and we have certificates for you, for your parents, for you guys to hang on your wall, because I know you're very, very proud of your students, as we are. And then in your certificate, we have a Klein's Dairy Bar gift card, so something sweet for you guys as well. But thank you, guys, and let's give them another round of applause.
I don't think that our Volunteer of the Year is here, but I still want to make sure that these individuals or these people are recognized. So our Volunteer of the Year is Tara Bell and her therapy dog, Scout. And you can see that Scout is actually smiling in that picture, at least it looks that way. So let me read what I got here. "Early in the school year, Tara reached out to the school wanting to bring Scout in as a therapy dog to spend time with our students. She started coming in on Tuesdays, greeting students as they entered school, spending time with students who signed up to meet with Scout, and working with some of our students on skills. Scout loves it when our students practice counting money and buy him treats. Scout often arrives in a themed outfit of the day," you can see he's wearing camo in that picture, "and our students love him. Tara brings him in on her day off, and she along with Scout have made such a positive impact on our school this year. So we greatly appreciate Tara's time and Scout's time as well."
Thank you, Mrs. Wooters. Next on our list tonight is Principal Alyssa Sims.
Hi, good evening. I am very honored tonight to recognize our Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts students and our Volunteer of the Year for Folks Run Elementary. So thank you for inviting us, School Board and Dr. Shiflett. First is Jenna Long. So Jenna, I want you to turn so they can see you. Okay. Jenna is described by her teachers as a responsible student who takes pride in her work. She is a student who is dependable, trustworthy, and hard-working. Jenna is an excellent role model for her peers and a good friend to all. She manifests the pillars of character in her actions and her words. She sets a good example for her peers, and we are proud to have her as a part of our Folks Run Elementary School community. So give Jenna a round of applause. Next, we have Ryland Reedy. All right. Ryland is described by his teachers as a hard worker, dependable, and respectful. He has overcome hardships with determination and grit. Ryland is always kind to classmates and treats them with respect. He is very proud of his perfect attendance and loves getting his perfect, perfect attendance certificates. He is a trustworthy person that can be counted on to be kind to all of his classmates. On a daily, he is setting good examples for his peers, and we are proud to have him as a part of our Folks Run Elementary community. Give him a round of applause.
And again, I have pins for you guys and certificates, but first, did you bring people with you? And do you want to talk into the microphone and tell who the people are? Great.
I brought my mom, my sister, and my grandma.
Awesome. And can you guys stand up? Do you want to talk into the microphone? Your dad, does your dad have a name? And Marvin Reedy?
Myron.
Myron, Myron Reedy. Dad, he called you dad! And again, thank you so much for raising such wonderful students, and you guys will be here next year, won't you? And I know Folks Run is an amazing school and does great things, and, and you guys were great leaders there, and I'm sure you'll be here next year doing great things as well. So thank you.
All right. Our Volunteer of the Year is Donna Baker, and she is not able to be with us this evening, but I know she is watching online tonight through the streaming. And so Donna is a faithful volunteer at Folks Run for years. Her children and several, several of her grandchildren have all graduated from Folks Run, but Donna continues to volunteer. Teachers appreciate that she is a regular and reliable volunteer that they can count on. Each week, teachers put work for her in the Donna Baker spot in the library, and Donna shows up every Monday at 8:20 a.m. light clockwork to complete the tasks. Work can range from cutting, copying, sorting, laminating, putting things together, and taking things apart. Donna is willing to help out with anything we need. Donna does all the work quietly and efficiently, and she never complains about any of the work that she's asked to do, even if it's something tedious like cutting out over 150 water droplets, the water cycle. We appreciate Donna's loyalty to our school and the help that she gives us each and every week. So she is our Volunteer of the Year.
Thank you, guys. Next on our list is John C. Myers, and Principal Erin Branner will be presenting.
Good evening. It is my great pleasure to introduce you to our John C. Myers students. And first up, we have Lilia Ernie. Lilia Ernie is recognized by her teacher, Jana Grandal, for her outstanding character. Lilia is a natural leader who is loyal, caring, and shows respect to everyone she meets. Lilia is responsible and hard-working far beyond her years, and we often joke that she could take over and run the class seamlessly without missing a beat. Lilia radiates positivity in everything she does. Our class, our school, and our world are a better place because of Lilia. And our second student is Adam Jacobson. Adam is recognized by his teacher, Jana Grandal, for routinely displaying the pillars of character in the classroom, around the school, and in our community. Adam is an all-around incredible young man who cares for others, takes responsibility for himself, and works hard to make sure that everyone feels heard, valued, and included. Adam is a difference-maker in all that he does, and he has a bright future ahead of
Again, thank you, guys, so much for being great members of our school community. John C.'s a great school. I was actually, we saw each other the other day, didn't we? Yeah, I remember you. And I actually recognized you, because I think I know your dad, and you brought him with you tonight. Do you want to talk into the microphone? Okay, great. Who'd you bring?
My mom, my dad, my sister, my brother, and some of our friends.
Wow. Can you guys stand up? Quite the posse. It takes, it takes a village to raise a great child, though, doesn't it? And did you bring people? Do you want to talk into the microphone? I can do it? Okay. Who'd you bring? Here. You brought your mom, your dad, and your brother. And where are they? If you guys can stand up? There you are. Here, I'm going to give these to you guys real quick while everybody class. And again, we have gift certificates to Klein's and pins and certificates for your parents for their wall. And again, thank you to the parents for raising such amazing young students, and you guys will be here next year, too, won't you? Are you excited about that? It's a pretty school, it's a pretty cool school, and you guys will, you'll be wonderful leaders and be involved in lots of stuff, I'm sure, right? Great. Thank you, guys, so much. And let's give them another round of applause.
I would also like to recognize our John C. Myers Volunteer of the Year, and I'm so glad that we got her here so that we can recognize her in person. Lacey Roberts is our Volunteer of the Year, and she embodies the true spirit of dedication and selflessness. While officially serving as a substitute and tutor within our school building during the day, Lacey's impact stretches far beyond the confines of the classroom. Her contributions shine the brightest outside of the regular school day, where she is the driving force behind events such as Teacher Appreciation Week, Day of Play, and all kinds of holiday festivities. Lacey is also known for her collaborations with teachers to bring special events around the curriculum into their day. Most recently, she planned a themed review day, complete with planet cookies, to help a fourth-grade class prepare for their solar system test. What sets Lacey apart is not just her impressive volunteer work, but her humble demeanor and genuine kindness. She operates behind the scenes, the scenes, aiming to make a difference without seeking attention for herself. Lacey Roberts enriches our school community in immeasurable ways.
Lacey, thank you for all you do for our school. We, I know how hard it is. I know how much you work and how much you throw your heart into it. So thank you very much for all of that. And for you, oh, did you bring people with you? And do you want the microphone? You want.
I brought my husband, Zach Roberts. My kids should be doing homework, so.
Should be doing homework. But thank you for, for letting us have her, because I know, yeah, I've got some at home doing stuff right now for me, and that, missing that homework time, too. That's, that's big. So thank you so much for being here, and thank you for all you do for our students. We also have a gift certificate for you, for Klein's Dairy Bar, as well as a certificate for your wall. And we also have that for Scout and the other two volunteers. So we'll make sure that gets to them, but thank you so much. And let's give all of our folks another round of applause.
Thank you, guys. Next on our list tonight is our Inspire Awards, and first is Kelsey Burgwijn that will be presenting.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Burgwijn, and this is my daughter, Abigail Burgwijn, and we are presenting to Ms. Hunter Messick. When I asked my daughter, Abigail, how she would describe her teacher, Ms. Messick, a smile immediately came across her face as she replied, "Caring and kind." When you walk into Hunter Messick's first-grade classroom, you can feel a sense of belonging and community the moment you arrive. On the days I've been invited to her classroom, I'm in awe as I watch her interactions with her students. Her classroom is full of smiles, laughter, and the busy hum of her children getting excited about learning. She's innovative and flexible in her approaches to meet individual needs. I've observed her give up her planning period to go to a music class with her students because a child was having a hard day and needed her presence. As an educator, I have a deep level of respect for how she has built relationships with her students to help them feel positive about their time in her classroom. I'm forever grateful for the kindness and encouragement she's shown my daughter this year. Not only does Ms. Messick inspire my daughter, Abigail, to do her best every day, she inspires
Thank you, Ms. Messick, for all that you do for our schools. Next on the list presented tonight will be Megan C., and she will be presenting to Ms. Rebecca Harris, math teacher at Broadway High School.
So we are nominating Ms. Becky Harris, my daughter's basketball coach. Rebecca Harris is a true inspiration at Broadway High School, excelling not only as a math teacher and high school coach, but also as a dedicated mentor and volunteer for youth sports. Her ability to connect with older students as a respected teacher and coach while simultaneously giving her time and expertise to younger children showcases her tireless dedication to fostering growth and developing at every stage of students' lives. Through her actions, Becky demonstrates a commitment not only to academic and athletic success, but also instilling core values and shaping well-rounded individuals. Her willingness to invest in younger generations outside of the classroom and sports field underscores her profound impact and influence as an educator and community leader. She was my coach, and now she's my daughter's coach, and I just think it's so cool, and she's been giving so much of her time away from her family for kids of all ages, so she just really inspires me to give out to the community as well.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next on our list presented tonight is student Ryan Plogger, and he will be presented to his teacher tonight. Maybe not here? Okay. Is Mr., is it Fuco? Is Joe Fuco in the house tonight to receive? See ya. Great. We will thank you, guys, for nominating your teachers and coaches and things like that. It's such a joy to be able to, to see the good things that's happening inside of our schools, and another great opportunity for parents to be able to reach out and nominate your child's teacher or coach, like we saw tonight. And so I'm, thank you so much for doing that. Next on our agenda tonight is, I'm, it's going to be Board Member Comments? Is that what it says? No, School Board Appreciation Month.
So February is School Board Appreciation Month, and so to each of our School Board members, I want to personally thank you for your dedication and commitment to the betterment of Rockingham County Public Schools. Also, I want to thank you for your unwavering passion to serve our community and advocate for public education. You have demonstrated courage to enact policies that you believe are in the best interest of students and families. As well, during our budget process, you have been mindful of all our CPS employees, especially our teachers. Being a School Board member is a thankless job, and I wanted to take a moment during this month to personally say thank you. And I also have a certificate for each of you.
Ms. Lohr says she would proudly put that on her wall. She's going to frame it. So, thank you, Dr. Shiflett. I do appreciate it, and thank you so much for the, to all the Board members for the amount of time. We was talking tonight before we came in to one of the Board members and just talking about how much time that it takes to be a School Board member and how much time that we put into this, and it is a lot of time. You know, we've put in a lot of work, especially this time of year when it comes to budgeting, and we've been meeting on budgets, we've been meeting on policy, we've, we've just been doing a lot, and we're just, as a, as a board, just working together for a month now. And so I really appreciate all, so much, that all the time that you put into it, not only the, the time we put into this, but the time that other Board members go out to schools and visit schools and talk to principals and teachers and go to musicals. I know that a bunch of us have been to quite a few of the musicals that's, that has been shown right now, and Broadway High School's musical was just tremendous, so I'm, we're very proud of what went on at Broadway High School, and Uncle Festus was my favorite. I don't know about y'all's, but I, it was, I had a great time that night, but it takes a lot. And Dr. Shiflett's going to be presenting those awards at the end of it. This is a going joke with us, but I'm, we just appreciate everything that I'm, that our schools are doing, especially with the musicals right now. But thank you, Board members, for the amount of time that you're putting in for not only this month, but in the months to come. All right. Now we are ready for highlights from Board members, and I'll start with Mrs. Lohr.
Thank you. I think Morticia was my favorite, but they were all fantastic. And they were fantastic, they're fantastic students at every single one of our schools, and that's one of my highlights. I got to go to musicals. I was able to make Sweeney Todd, The Addams Family, and, oh, gosh, 42nd Street. How could I forget? 42nd Street. I won't sing it because you guys don't want me to. But, and you'll find that, and where you can see that we're getting ready for musical here at J. Frank, I believe in two weeks, and you'll find as you come to the, the musicals at the middle school, and then you can watch these students grow. these students grow. Some of the students at East Rock are so amazingly talented and I've watched them grow from, I believe it was Shrek the Musical into what we had this year. And then I'm looking forward already for several performances of several schools next, all the schools, really. I like, every musical I leave thinking, "Oh, I can hardly wait to see that student next year." So, it's really a fun time. It's really an amazing thing to watch them grow. So, and I want to say thank you to all of our people that worked so hard on our musicals because it really is, it's amazing. There's also, we also had FFA Week last week and I was able to come here. I was actually here at this school three days in a row last week for an FFA workshop, a teacher breakfast, and I got to say hi to most of the teachers and fix them some sausage and bacon and eggs along with the FFA members, so that was a whole lot of fun. And I know a lot of the chapters did that as well. I was just able to make it here to help cook. And then they also had Hawks Hangout Night here last week where you could go around and see different things going on in the different rooms. They had like Reading with Goats, that was one of the rooms. And they had, in here, they were promoting the musical and just, they had a pizza, they had a pizza oven. They had several like conveyor belts that made pizzas and cooked them with a heat lamp. And they used coating to figure out how to make the little cart go through. It was so cool. That was in the science room. And then, of course, I do need to apologize. We're lambing like crazy at my house right now and the MTC lambs are doing great and we're having some of them too. But I actually have a lamb under a heat lamp right now so, that has got me a little frayed today. So, I'm sorry if I'm a little scattered and if I seem a little distracted tonight, but lots of amazing things going on in Rockingham County Public Schools and lots of things going on in Rockingham County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. Ms. Hurst.
I just want to reiterate what Ms. Laura said about our musicals. It's, we're right in the thick of things and I've had the pleasure of seeing all three of our high schools that have performed so far and I have loved every single one of those musicals for very different reasons. But what is amazing is to see the kids in the musical just take on these roles and these responsibilities that they have. And it's, I understand that at TA, we learned tap dancing, which is when you find out that only two of our students had ever had formal tap in their, in their his, you know, as a child, they had tap lessons, only two of them, and then you find out that, you know, so many of them learned tap just for this routine. And so, I know an incredible amount of work goes on to get these productions and they really, you know, are so amazing and incredible. And I'm just so proud of all of our students from the set design to light, sound, all, I mean, everything is just amazing. It's just amazing to see our students really flourish in that area. So, that's one highlight that I have. And then the other highlight that I have is it's spring sports season and there's lots of activity in our buildings and it's really great to see all of the extracurricular things that we offer for our students, whether it's sports, FFA, all kinds of programming. And those are the things that make our kid, you know, our kids love school, love coming to school for all of these extracurricular activities that we offer and I love that we do that, so.
Yeah, exactly right. Last week was FFA Week and one of the things that we saw was Drive Your Tractor to School Day and saw a lot of pictures out on Facebook with that, which was really cool to see how many kids we have that still drive tractors and drove them to school, which was neat. So, thank you for all that helped out with that as well. Ms. Cave, you're next.
I thought you were doing yours, so, but I'm ready. I'm ready.
I can do mine if you want to.
No, that's fine. I too went to some of the musicals and the one at East Rockingham, Sweeney Todd, I was just so floored by the ability of high school students to memorize the amount of lines that they memorize. I left there just really floored and with so many questions. And maybe I should get with Ms. Ford and ask her, you know, like, how, how long did it take to make all of those props? Like, did they paint them themselves and did they start at the beginning of the year? And has this been the only thing they're working on? And how do you even practice? It's such a long, it's so much. If you've never been to one of the musicals, you just, you don't know and you're, and you're missing out. And they're just so full of talent at the high school level that I was just amazed. And I guess you forget as you get older, the, you know, ability of the mind when you're younger to memorize like that, but I just, you know, I don't know that that's normal. Like, I think our students are just excellent. I think they are above average in Rockingham County. And so, my heart was just, you know, I was just glad to see that we are educating those kinds of students. And the, yeah, the Drive Your Tractor to School Day, that just, that's made me smile this week. I just, you know, I don't have to tell anybody in Rockingham County that if you don't have farms, you don't have farmers, like, we don't have food. And so, it was just a joy to me to see that we are raising kids that will go into that, you know, that will be headstrong into agriculture and that we're, you know, that we're, that we have that type of culture around here. And so, I just thought it was really neat. And one thing that was said about one of our students tonight receiving awards was that she was self-motivated and hardworking. And of one of our volunteers, it was said that she was selfless. And those are all the things required for success. And so, you know, we see that in a lot of, a lot of our students, all the way from the ones that participate in the musicals to the ones that drive their tractors to school. So, I'm just very proud to be working here, serving in Rockingham County, very, very proud of our students. It's so hard every week to pick highlights, but they were just two of my favorites from the past two weeks.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Mrs. Burgwijn?
I hate going last on this. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. So, of course, the musicals, right? I got to see The Addams Family. I took my daughter and she loved it. I even emailed several people to school. My daughter was on, the next morning when we were getting ready for school, she was like, "Alexa, play. I'm crazier than you." And she was driving me, driving me crazy. So, all of those songs have just been on repeat in our house. One thing that, if you go to the musicals and you go to the last one, right, they recognize all the seniors and all the staff and everything. And that was really kind of emotional for me because I could see just, they poured their heart and soul into this musical and just how much it meant to them. And it's just a little family that they create. And that, I don't recommend going to the last one if you're like me because it really, it really got me. I was like, "Oh, these poor kids." Because they, they've just created this little family, but it was awesome. It was really cool. And then Forty Second Street, again, like the dancing, I danced all since I was three years old through, through college and I was so impressed. I didn't know that most of the students hadn't danced before, so to see how skilled they were, I was very, very impressed. Again, the music was awesome, the singing was awesome. I feel like I don't really have many skills or talents now after seeing these kids for two weekends straight. One of my board highlights is, and I've said this before, my daughter goes to Linville Edom Elementary School, but I have had the privilege of helping with some fundraisers for one of our students who is battling cancer right now. So, I just wanted to throw it out there that they do have a bake sale and a yard sale coming up, March 9th at 9:00 a.m. to support the family. So, that has been something that has near and dear to my heart and I've seen this little tiny school of Linville come together as a community and I think it's a really good representation of Rockingham County as a whole. So, anyway, just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgwijn. Thank you for mentioning that. Our hearts, our, our hearts and our thoughts and our prayers go out for that student and their family, so I thank you for mentioning that fundraiser tonight. Dr. Shifflin?
So, first, I want to say ditto on everything about the musicals and then I also want to recognize two students who were state champions in wrestling. Drake Garrison from Broadway High School and Owen Hartman from Spotswood High School. So, that's quite an accomplishment to be a state champion. So, I had the opportunity to be there on Friday to watch some of the preliminary rounds and it was quite an event. I really enjoyed it and would encourage you to take it in next year if you have an opportunity. And then also, I want to give a shout out to Dr. Amy Painter and her staff. This past Saturday, they worked in collaboration with other school divisions to host a job fair and we interviewed over, I think, eighty-six candidates and hired five, we hired five teachers on Saturday. So, we're starting to be in the process of recruiting heavily and hiring teachers for next school year. So, it was well organized and Dr. Painter and her staff did an excellent job with that, so I just want to say kudos to you for that work.
And to give you a hand, too. So, thank you. I'll go last, but everyone has said a lot tonight, highlighted a lot that's going on in Rockingham County Public Schools, but I do want to mention Turner Ashby Girls, they head down to Abington, I believe, tomorrow and to be in the state, state basketball game. And we're just wish them all the best of luck. This is the first time in a while that the TA girls have been, so we're all rooting for you. I think we have the boys playing in the states from Spotswood and I'm not for sure, playing Northside. And I'm, but all those playing in state games, we, we're rooting for you and we're looking forward for you bringing home the state titles. And that brings us to our action items tonight and I will entertain a motion to, for our, to approve the minutes for the February 12th and February 13 minutes. Want to move forward?
I move we approve the minutes from February 12th, 2024 and February 13th, 2024 as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Next on the list is field trips and I believe that we have a recommendation from the superintendent.
Yes. Chairman Carlson, board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. Spotswood High School Theater Shakespeare Speaking Competition, April 13th through the 16th, one student, New York City. FFA Ag Class, May 7th through 9th, twenty students, Port Isabel, Virginia. And JMU Trio Senior Retreat, March 1st through the 3rd, six students, Luray, Virginia. From Massnut Technical Center, Skills USA State Leadership Conference, April the 19th through the 21st, forty-five students, Virginia Beach, Virginia. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Shifflin. Board members, hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to follow that recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgwijn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments? I do have one question, Dr. Shifflin, on this, is some of these, do we, does the county able to give them any, help them out with any funds on any of the field trips, like staying hotels or anything like that? Do we do anything like that?
So, for some of the field trips where there are competitions, like if they get a national recognition or state recognition, we will help them with those. And then, in many of the other cases, students like, I don't know particularly, but this FFA Ag Class, they'll do fundraising to offset the costs and expenses of those trips. So, we don't necessarily pick up the entire tab, but we try to help in some ways with the, the students who have sort of earned the privilege to go to the next level.
All right, just a question we were having a conversation about today. Board members, hearing a second there, any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All those opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Next on the list tonight is requests from Steve Reed. Welcome back, Mr. Reed.
Chairman Carlson, Dr. Shifflin, members of the board. I'm here this evening because the renewable contract for mechanical maintenance expires at the end of June of this year. We are asking for approval to use competitive negotiations via a request for proposal in lieu of competitive bidding. By using the RFP, we can further assure the contractor has the appropriate level of resources to service our division. These resources include, but are not limited to, trained HVAC and control technicians that live within fifty miles of our division, adequate training to handle and dispatch in a timely manner, response to trouble calls, adequate staff and training to be able to form, perform preventive maintenance on our HVAC equipment in accordance with manufacturer specifications, and adequate warehousing of needed repairs. The evaluation categories will be qualifications and capability, twenty points, product to division and parts availability, twenty points, service capabilities and capacity, twenty-five points, and price, thirty-five points. I'm also asking for the approval of the selection committee, which would be myself, Mark Klesinski, maintenance facilitator, Carol Miller, administrative assistance in, in maintenance, Red Danzy, principal of Spotswood High School, Amy Wooters, principal of J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, and Drew Miller, principal of Mountain View Elementary School.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the use of competitive negotiations with the RFP for the renewable contract for mechanical maintenance and approval of the RFP selection committee as presented by Steve Reed, director of maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. Shifflin. Hearing superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Any questions or comments from Mr. Reed while he's here? Hearing none, I'm, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Reed, for coming out. All right, next on our list is the school calendar.
Good evening, Chairman Carlson, Dr. Shifflin, and members of the school board. Great to see you all this evening. At the January 22nd school board meeting, a proposed draft school calendar for the upcoming 2024-2025 school year was shared with school board members as an informational item. The draft calendar had one hundred and seventy-six instructional days and twenty-one designated teacher workdays, parent conferences, and professional development. The school board requested that committee consider moving spring break to align with the Easter holiday and moving one of the February in-service days to the Monday following the Super Bowl. Additionally, as requested, a calendar was shared at the February 12th school board meeting indicating an after Labor Day school start. After additional feedback from families and staff and much discussion by the committee, the following revisions were made. February 17th and 18th align with the November 4th and 5th days where we split the parent-teacher conference days with the county-led in-service days. March 10th is now a school day. June 4th is now the last day of school and is a one o'clock early dismissal. The two teacher workdays at the end of the school year are June 5th and 6th and the calendar remains with one hundred and seventy-six instructional days and twenty-one designated teacher workdays, parent conferences, and professional development. My request of the school board is to approve the revised 2024-2025 proposed school calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy, and thank you for all the work you put into this as well. I've heard a lot of good things about this year's school calendar and a lot of good feedback, so thanks for all you've done.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the revised 2024-2025 school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Shifflin. School board members, hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to follow that?
I move we approve the school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Burgwijn. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much again for all the work you put into this. That leads us in tonight to our informational items and first on our list tonight to present is Mrs. Carrie Gray.
Good evening, board. February is CTE Month and we take time during February not only to celebrate our wonderful CTE teachers and students and all of their accomplishments, but also to promote our CTE programs and raise awareness for what they do to prepare students for the workplace and college and beyond. In our high schools and middle schools, Rockingham County Public Schools offers agriculture, business, family and consumer sciences, marketing and technology education, and our trade industrial programs are at MTC. Students can also be involved in the Career and Technical Student Organizations, FFA, FBLA, FCCLA, DECA, and TSA. All of those organizations, with the exception of TSA because they're different and celebrate in October, have celebrated a week for their student organizations during CTE Month. So, I appreciate so many teachers and students being here tonight. It's a very busy It's a very busy time of year for them, so being here just shows their commitment and their belief in what they're doing. If you've not had an opportunity to see CTE in action in our middle and high schools, I hope you have that opportunity soon. They're doing really amazing things, and we're going to celebrate some of those things this evening. Our students have prepared a brief overview of each of those program areas. I'm going to shift the podium over to Grayson Long, who is not only representing Turner Ashby FCCLA, but she is also an FCCLA State Vice President for Public Relations.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. So, good evening, Mr. Cross, Dr. Shiflett, and the rest of the school board members. So tonight, as Ms. Gray presented before you, we have different representatives from each of the CTSOs that we offer here in Rockingham County. So first up, we're going to go in alphabetical order. We have DECA. So is there any members of DECA who would like to stand? And if you were a past member when you were in DECA in high school, please stand as well. Yay! So our presenter on DECA is Serena Lapp, and she is from Broadway High School.
Good evening. My name- Is it on? Sorry. Good evening. My name is Serena Lapp, and this year I am serving as Broadway High School's DECA president. DECA stands for Distribution Education Clubs of America and is a student education organization for high schoolers. It is a prodigious opportunity to gain leadership and problem-solving skills. Each year, we travel to two conferences, our state leadership conference and our national conference. At states, students will compete in either a written or role-play event. And, and, um, one through seventh place will go to internationalals. DECA is such an important part of my life. I have five siblings, three of which are former DECA members, and two went to ICDC previously. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. They were just a part of this supportive community that helped them grow and gain all these invaluable skills. During my first year as a freshman in high school, I was, through DECA, I became a more confident, though it doesn't seem like it right now, a more confident and a more skilled person going on to both nationals and states. I am beyond grateful to be a part of this CTSO. And, um, it just has done so much for me, but we keep on getting into the issue of funding. For states, students will pay out-of-pocket two hundred dollars, well, about two hundred dollars, which is still a lot for most people. And then ICDC can cost up to two thousand dollars, which is unmanageable for many families. I, among many other families, cannot afford to put out this type of money. My advisor, Ms. Cromer, tries her best to solve this issue, but it has still proved to be an, a problem. And with our international conference being in California this year, it is going to resurface. I hope you can see, even though I am nervous, that I'm very passionate about DECA. And I just thank you so much that you gave me this opportunity to share.
And you did a, you did a great job. Don't, don't worry about being nervous. It's-
Yes, you did amazing. Thank you for coming. Our next CTSO that's going to be presenting is FBLA. So is there any former FBLA members or other students in the county? Please stand. I saw a hand over there. All right, all right. And our FBLA presenter is Gabriella Garlock, who is also from Broadway High School.
Good evening. My name is Gabriella Garlock. I'm currently serving as chapter president for the Broadway FBLA chapter. My advisor is Mr. Seth Stratford. FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America. FBLA inspires and prepares students to become community-minded business leaders in a global society through relevant career preparation and leadership experiences. FBLA offers members the opportunity to attend leadership development conferences at a state and national level and compete in different types of competitions such as test events, role plays, and written papers. FBLA is a co-curricular organization offered with business and marketing classes. FBLA has taught me valuable leadership skills such as communication, time management, team building, and collaboration, as well as furthering my understanding of the importance of community relationships. Without FBLA and the experience I've been fortunate enough to have throughout my membership, I would not nearly be the leader I am today in and outside of the organization. We have a state leadership conference, or SLC, held annually during April located in Reston, and a national leadership conference that takes place every year in June. This past year, it was held in Atlanta, Georgia, and this year it will be held in Orlando, Florida. I have had the opportunity to attend and compete at the national level this past year and could not be more grateful for the opportunity. I feel lucky to be able to participate in FBLA and truly believe that I'm all the better for it. Thank you, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you. And then the next CTSO that we will be talking about is FCCLA, which I'm here to talk about tonight. But formerly FCCLA was known as FHA or Future Homemakers of America. So do we have any former FCCLA or FHA members in the audience tonight? So hello, as Ms. Gray mentioned, my name is Grayson Long, and this year I am serving not only as an officer at TAHHS, but I'm also serving as the Virginia FCCLA Vice President of Public Relations. FCCLA stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, and is a student-led organization found in both middle and high schools across our nation. It is a co-curricular organization with the family and consumer sciences education classes, and is an incredible leadership opportunity. In fact, our tagline is actually "The Ultimate Leadership Experience." So personally, FCCLA, to me, has meant an opportunity for me to grow my public speaking skills. I was very humbled and kind of took me back to my younger years watching all the students getting character counts awards tonight because I, in sixth grade too, used to be that shy little girl up at the mic afraid to even announce who was with me, to represent me getting an award. So to be up here tonight speaking in front of you guys, I really have to owe to FCCLA. And I'm also a member of FFA too, even though I'm not speaking about that CTSO tonight. So a lot of the places I've been able to travel, people that I've met and leadership opportunities I've had is because of these CTSOs being in our county schools. So as well as the other CTSOs, FCCLA has two main conferences each year. Our State Leadership and Recognition Conference is held in April, and our National Leadership Conference is held in July. So students compete in events called STAR Events, which stands for Students Taking Action With Recognition. And those are in the spring at our state conference, and then if they place either first or second, they get to move on to national level. So I have attended state conferences every year since I was in sixth grade, and then due to COVID, I have missed some nationals. But as well as the other CTSOs, we have nationals that stretch from this side of the US all the way to the opposite edge of our country. So this year, we actually have our nationals in Seattle, Washington. So all the way up in the corner of the United States, I will travel, hopefully. So I would just like to thank you guys again and reiterate for allowing us this time to speak about our CTSOs. And I will introduce the next person. So next, we have FFA. So is there any former members or current members of FFA in the audience? I know there's some out there. And tonight, we are going to be having Katie Payne, who is also from Broadway High School, speaking about FFA.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Payne, the Broadway FFA Chapter President, and also serving as your Rockingham County FFA Federation reporter. So I'm going to talk to you all about the positive impact that FFA has on students in our county. And FFA makes a positive impact in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. I know for me personally, the first thing I'll touch on is premier leadership. I remember being a sixth grader here at J. Frank Hilliard and starting on my leadership journey. And in sixth grade, I got the opportunity to join FFA, and I never thought it would take me the places that it's brought me to today. So the premier leadership side of FFA, we have competitions that are called LDEs, which stands for Leadership Development Events. And I remember as a sixth grader begging Mr. Welsh to let me compete in a competition called Extemporaneous Public Speaking. And for those of you who don't know what that is, extemporaneous public speaking, to me personally, holds a special place in my heart. And in that competition, you are given thirty minutes with a topic off the fly that you don't really know what it's going to be. And you have materials that you've prepared ahead of time. And then you're given thirty minutes to write a four-to-six-minute speech that you then present to a panel of judges, and then you're questioned on your topic. So with this competition, it really helped me to develop in more speaking skills and become a stronger public speaker and be able to speak about anything at any time. So with this competition, I competed this past year at the area competition, where I later competed at the state competition at Virginia Tech this past summer, and had the opportunity to represent the state of Virginia at the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. So it was an awesome opportunity, and that has been by far one of the best LDEs that I have competed in personally. However, there's other competitions as well. There's competitions called parliamentary procedures and then conduct of chapter meeting, where I also competed nationally in, where the students are judged based on their ability to run a meeting and discuss topics as a team. So with these LDEs, they also help you grow as a leader, so which brings me into personal growth. So I know, starting as that sixth-grade kid in FFA who didn't really know what they were getting into at the beginning, I have really grown as a person through the opportunities that FFA has presented me. So FFA really helps kids to grow in, with officer positions and different services that we provide to our community. So as a sixth grader, I did not hold an office, but since seventh grade, I have had the opportunity to be a chapter officer at J. Frank and at Broadway as well, and other FFA members across the country, or across the county, well, the country as well, because we're a national FFA organization. But in our county, lots of students have the opportunity to serve as an officer in their school's chapter. And I have seen so many different people grow and blossom as a person just through this opportunity alone. And then also, we provide a lot of community service throughout our communities as well. So that's how we allow for our students to grow. And all of this leads you to your career success, which FFA helps you to grow in your career success by giving students opportunities to compete in CDEs. And for you all who may not know what a CDE is, it's a career development event. So I picked out two CDEs that are my favorite to touch on. So there is the poultry competition, where basically you judge chickens and turkeys. And as boring as that may sound, it's actually very interesting. So what you do, you judge live chickens, you judge the carcasses of chickens and turkeys as well. And you go through all of this competition process, and then you can compete at the federation level and then go on to the state competition. And I, back in twenty twenty-two, had the opportunity to compete at the state level, and my team represented Virginia at the national level as well. So that has been one of my favorite competitions as well because it's so diverse compared to different things. And there's things for every student in FFA. There is things for the kids who want to do more farm-related things like poultry. And then there's things for the CDEs for the kids who may want to be outside more, like forestry, which I will have the opportunity to represent my school at the state competition this upcoming April. So in forestry, you go out into the woods, you're in the woods all day long, and you are based on the competition. You judge trees, you have to identify them, you judge equipment, and then you also have to be able to identify wood products. So as much as that is, there are so many different CDEs that give kids the opportunity to expand their horizons in order to see what they may want to go into later in their careers. So FFA has three main things we touch on, and these three things have all impacted me personally so much. And for me, I am so grateful to have the opportunity to be an FFA member and to conclude my senior year as our president and then have all of these opportunities to come up as well. And I thank you all for the support that you've shown our FFA, not only for my chapter, but for the county's chapters as well. You all have been great supporters to our entire county's FFA, and we thank you all for that.
Thank you, Katie. Next, we will hear from Skills USA. So is there any former Skills USA members in the audience or current ones? And our presenter on Skills USA is from MTC, and his name is James Rios.
Hi, everyone. My name is James Rios, and I am your twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Virginia Skills USA Vice President. I attend Massnet Technical Center, and my advisor here is Mr. Lee Smith. I wanted to tell you a little bit about my experience with Skills USA. I was not very good with public speaking. If you were to ask me a year ago if I could do this now, I would definitely tell you no. But I'm up here doing it now because of Skills USA. Skills USA has really helped me with my leadership in the workforce, which is a big thing when it comes to diesel technology because I'm trying to go into the diesel field. I'd like to tell you also about our national conference that's down in Atlanta, Georgia. That overall is a great experience for us and everyone down there. I also thank the board for approving the field trip down to Virginia Beach for, for Skills USA. But I just thank you guys for your support, and I hope you guys continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And our final CTSO that is going to be spoken about tonight, which has a lot of people here as I can see, is TSA. So please stand if you were a current member of TSA or were back in your high school years. So tonight, to speak about TSA, we have Sadie Morris, and she is from East Rockingham High School.
Hello. My name is Sadie Morris, and I am a junior, and I serve as East Rockingham High School's TSA president. TSA stands for Technology Student Association and is a student-run organization for middle and high school students. TSA is a competition-based club with more than three hundred thousand members all over the nation, offering more than seventy different competitions for the participants to choose from. These competitions range from architecture to flight to photography, music, transportation modeling, fashion design, CAD design, video production, and much more. In twenty twenty-one, my advisor, Mr. Sitch, approached me and asked if I wanted to be the president of our school's TSA program, as it hasn't been active in six or seven years. Resurrecting the program was slow, but we slowly got more and more members involved. And we were able to attend the regional and state competitions last year. Hopefully this year, we can also attend national-level conferences. Being in TSA has helped me gain skills as a leader, but also helped me take more accountability for my own time management as it takes careful planning and scheduling to be able to balance competition work, schoolwork, and other extracurricular activities. TSA has also made me a better team player and has helped me be more flexible and has taught me how to adapt to change more readily. Through TSA, I have made some wonderful friends and have had so much fun being able not to see only myself, but also my fellow chapter members succeed and achieve great things. Being able to be a part of this amazing program has provided me with many wonderful and value opportunities and experiences. In TSA, we have regional, state, and national-level competitions. This year, the state conference will be held in, at the Hampton Convention Center in May, and the national-level conference will be held in Orlando, Florida in June. Our regional competition has just taken place this past weekend. Thank you.
So in addition to talking to all of you all tonight and the school board members about what all of our CTSOs have to offer, we also wanted to touch on the issue of funding. So thank you for allowing all these CTE program areas to come here and share again. It is very evident that we have a lot of passionate students about our respective organizations because they have impacted us so greatly and have allowed us the opportunity to gain skills that we truly will use throughout the rest of our lives. So as you can imagine, many of the students have already touched on this, but the expense to attend these events are quite expensive. So besides teaching classes, our CTSO advisors, mine is Ms. Joni Lamb from Turner Ashby High School, are also often dedicating a hundred or more additional hours outside of the classroom to help us fundraise. For many students, they would not be able to attend such a trip without all of this fundraising help. In twenty twenty, the school board decided to help support our students who competed at the national level by awarding a hundred dollars per student to pay for trip transportation. We want you to know how much we appreciate this. While our trips tend to cost close to two thousand dollars per person, every bit of funds received truly does help. As representatives of our CTSOs, we are also here tonight to advocate for additional support from Rockingham County Public Schools. We know budgets everywhere are very tight, and unfortunately, even the budgets of our own families have tightened over the past year or so due to inflation in our economy.
own families have tightened over the past year or so due to inflation in our economy. So I love the phrase that I have heard my advisor often say to others, "I never want the issue of money to be the reason why a student doesn't attend an FCCLA trip." Would the school board please consider avenues where they could provide some additional financial support to our student leaders so that they could have the opportunity to attend these ultimate leadership experiences?
Participating in the various conferences takes time and effort from our students, but also requires significant funding, especially if they are to travel to national conferences held in states all across the country. And specifically for TSA, even though our TSA works on bringing in funds by organizing various fundraiser events, unfortunately, a large cost of these trips continue to prevent most, many of my peers from participating despite the significant interest. We ask that the school board consider aiding our programs to promote greater and more equitable participation in our student organizations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys, for presenting tonight. And for all the, for everyone that spoke here tonight, you guys did a great job and it can be a little nerve-wracking sometime to speak during the public like this. So you did a great job. Ms. Long, I've heard a lot about you and your reputation has definitely went before you and you're going to do great things. And so nice to meet you tonight. Maybe we can get a chance to talk with you and those other students as me and Ms. Hurst, the vice chair, maybe come out and just find out what some of these needs are for funding and get a better understanding. So maybe we can plan that in the next few weeks before we approve the budget for this coming year. So thank you.
How about that? Thank you again. And that's a tough act to follow. I really should have considered flipping that, but that's all right. Thank you for the opportunity again, school board, Chair Cross, and Dr. Shiflett to speak to you this evening and to bring a proposal before you for an agricultural land lab for you to consider. This proposal is a compilation of the hard work of our RCPS Agricultural Production Advisory Committee. They recognize the need for such a facility based on our curriculum, our students' needs, and the development of our programs around the county. And they pinpointed characteristics that would ensure that the facility meets the needs of our diversified agricultural community and all of our students. And so this is really their work that I'm presenting to you this evening. So why agriculture, why now, and why Rockingham County? Some of you may have seen a sort of viral post of the 2022 Ag Census statistics that was circulating around social media the last couple of weeks. I asked the author if he minded if I shared some of those statistics and his analysis of those because why repeat what someone else already did so well, right? So according to that 2022 Ag Census data, Rockingham County generated almost 22% of the state's entire agricultural revenue and over half, 55.89%, to be specific, of the entire state of Virginia's farm net cash income. Rockingham County's farms produced a total of almost $1.2 billion in revenue and paid $6.5 million in property taxes. However, just as we see the pattern nationally, Rockingham County continues to lose farms and lose farmland. Our farming population continues to increase in age and that makes our residents even further removed from agriculture because they just don't have the personal experience. Maybe they didn't grow up on a farm, their grandparents don't have a farm, they just don't know where their food comes from and what it's like to be on a farm. So in order to continue to be a national powerhouse in agricultural production, we do have to ensure that our future generations value agriculture, understand the career opportunities available in the agriculture industry, because if they've never experienced agriculture, they don't know what careers might be available to them. Know where their food comes from and understand the significant impact, economic impact, that agriculture provides to Rockingham County. There is no better place than here in Rockingham County and there is no better time than now to be discussing this proposal. So the advisory committee identified three goals that, as we consider an agricultural land lab, would guide the mission vision and guide us to find an adequate piece of property to meet the needs of our students. And those goals are to create a permanent facility for hands-on agricultural experiences in Rockingham County Public Schools where every student pre-K through 12 could experience agriculture. Also to provide a permanent home for our MTC ag production facility that's currently partnering with farms in the county. That system is working fine for now. It's working really well. We appreciate our partner farms. But as I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation, there's no way to really know agriculture unless you're immersed in the, with the same livestock and the same facility daily. And then we would like to identify and acquire a centralized location to host these educational programs, to increase agricultural literacy, and for all students to have meaningful agricultural experiences in Rockingham County. We do have agriculture programs in all four middle and high schools in Rockingham County. Our teachers do an outstanding job of providing hands-on opportunities for all of our students. Many of our elementary schools already offer agricultural experiences, field trips, days, programmings, lessons for our students. But there are some parts of the agriculture curriculum that, due to scale, a shared facility would really be beneficial to all of our students pre-K through 12. For example, teaching soils in high school, it's just not feasible to dig a soil pit at all for high schools for students to really have the experience they should have when they're studying soils. Our chemistry students could also study some chemistry using those soil pits as well. In our ag production program, there's great value, this is what I was talking about before, in knowing how livestock acts on a day-to-day basis so you can assess health and know when they're acting differently and you might need to have some interventions. MTC hosts an outstanding agriculture production program, but in order to be prepared to work in production agriculture, students need to be immersed in what it means to be in production agriculture every single day. Elementary students can see math and science come to life as they determine crop yields, crop yield rates from test plots. A central facility where all our CPS students can experience agriculture through hands-on experiences would be an asset to our students and communities. So what would the programming look like? This is just a really brief overview of a brainstorming session from the committee. So our vision is that maybe K through 12 students in that group would have at least one experience in their, between kindergarten or pre-K and second grade with some hands-on sensory experience to get them familiar with agriculture, know where their food comes from. Grades three through five, students could study hydroponics, seed oil production, basic animal nutrition. They may take a field trip in, let's say, fourth grade to experience something in the land lab that would apply to their science curriculum. These experiences, my vision is they would be developed with elementary school teachers to make sure that they're aligned with curriculum. They're not replacing anything they're already doing in their ag days at their schools or their field trip. It would be a supplement to that curriculum. Grade six through eight, we have middle school agriculture. Our farm-to-table classes have been really successful in lots of our middle schools. So students could visit the land lab to learn about livestock and poultry handling, food processing, and safety. And then in our high schools, in our MTC ag production program, students could experience livestock breeding management, soils analysis, forestry, and they could have individualized agri-science fair projects. Students that may not have access to animals or access to facilities where they want to conduct those types of experiments could use the facilities in the land lab to do So looking at basic facilities and infrastructure, all of this is really driven by the, ultimately the type of property that might be acquired for this need. But these are some basic needs that the committee identified that would be important for the facility. Accessibility is a huge one, so all students can access the facility. Should have brought some water up here with me. That's all right. I'll stumble, but it will be good. You might need it. So again, the facilities, it really depends on what type of, thank you, Dr. Shiflett. A pity on me. All right. So land is a non-renewable resource. There is what there is. A lot of the facility needs would be driven by the piece of property that would be required, the topography, the road frontage. Are there any riparian zones, forested acreage? What we would be able to do would be driven by the property, but we're hoping for a plot that's at least 35 to 45 acres. There are land labs in 19 public high schools in Virginia and the acreage in those land labs ranges anywhere from 15 to 60 acres, depending on the locality. So coming to the funding part, the biggest impact, the biggest ask of the school board would be for a position that's a farm manager, farm manager program coordinator. And this person would run the day-to-day operations of the farm, also coordinate the educational opportunities pre-K through 12, ensure that if a teacher wants to have a lesson at the land lab, things were set up. So it would be sort of a dual role there. And then the actual acquisition of the property, you know, next steps would be to ask the school board if this is a priority and something that you see as something that's beneficial to our curriculum and programming, and then work with the board of supervisors to identify funding. But there are land conservation grant sources and all sorts of opportunities available on that track. And so I'll be back at the next school board meeting to ask for your support to move forward with this proposal and talking to partners with the board of supervisors, next steps, to see if we can make this dream a reality for our students.
Great.
Do you have questions?
Yeah. School board members, have any questions? Good. Mrs. Gray, we look forward to you returning at our next meeting and letting us know some a little bit more information, but we're excited to look at this.
Thanks. I'll bring my own water next time.
You're fine. You're fine. Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Next on our information item tonight is going to be budget and planning and Mr. Moyers. If you're a student here or would like to leave at this time, it's fine as well. Go ahead, Mr. Moyers.
Dr. Shiflett, members of the board, want to thank you for having me this evening. Chair Cross. Just want to give a couple of updates about the budget process this evening. Nothing in depth to go into this evening. As you'll know, we've met in the last week in our two-by-twos to go over a lot of the budget information, start planning. Over the next two weeks, we will finish meeting and Dr. Shiflett will present to you all on March 11th his proposal, budget, and which will also then go to the board of supervisors on March 13th. The next thing I did want to talk to you about this evening is the House and Senate have brought their versions of the budget out in the last week and I want to give you updates on what their versions would look like for Rockingham County schools if they were to be passed. So the House version was a little more favorable to us than the governor's. It provided an additional $1.8 million to our budget for next year. Most of that would be in a 3% salary increase instead of the 1% that the governor had proposed. If they did pass that, we would still need an additional $600,000 to fund that 3% raise. The other area that provided more money was in ELL support. They were going to give us about an additional $400,000 in EL support. The Senate version would provide Rockingham County with initial $3.3 million in revenue after a 3% salary increase. The biggest reason for that is they are proposing to remove the support cap, which is how many positions the budget currently funds from the state. They also would give us an increase for at-risk children and also ELL support as well. No one knows which budget will get passed. More than likely to be a compromise between the three because the House is the, kind of the middle between the governors and the Senate. That's what we're expecting for at this point. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Moyers? I appreciate the time. Okay, do you have?
No clue. It's when Richmond decides that they want to, they want to compromise. Last year, we didn't know till September. Typically, we'll know hopefully by the end of March, early April. The odds of us knowing before we have to pass our budget are probably not going to happen, which is why we err on the conservative side because we can't budget for something we don't end up getting. So we'll, we'll cross that bridge, but yeah, we, we think it's going to be probably somewhere in the middle.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Moyers, for all the time you've put into this and for meeting with us and I'm sure we'll meet a few more times. Four, this is approved, but thanks for all the time and effort that you've put into it and all the questions we've had for you as well, digging into different information.
And we'll be in touch in the next week with updates.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the list tonight for information is Ms. Hurst, and she has an update for our library materials committee update.
Thank you. I do want to give an update on our progress towards the library materials policy. We've met with our librarians on February 13th. Then on February 21st, I believe, we, our subcommittee met with legal counsel. We had hoped to have a draft ready as an information item for tonight, but we're just not ready. We're not there yet. And so we expect, we now expect to have a draft for our March 11th school board meeting. And that week after we release the draft, we'll send out a survey where community members can provide feedback. We'll probably have a time limit on that of about a week so that we can take some time to then go through the comments and make adjustments as necessary. And then we hope to have a final draft back here at the very last meeting in March, which I believe is the 25th. So that's an update for now. We're working as quickly as we can. Again, we had, we were shooting for tonight for a draft and we're just, we're just not there yet and we'd like to take our time with it and make sure we're doing a good job with it. So that's our update.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Before we go into public comments tonight, I'm, I'm going to take a three-minute break. So we'll take a three-minute break and we'll come back for public comments. All right. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to take a bathroom break and also get some of the students that were here that wanted to get home. I understand as a parent, having kids out on the road too late is not too cool. So I do want to explain before we go into our public comments tonight. The reason why we have decided, the reason why I've decided and talked with the board about changing this was it's important for us as a school board to get our business done throughout the school board meeting. And that's why we changed it from the beginning to the end. And a lot of times, the public comment section could be pretty heated, pretty passionate. And it is easier for us to be able to get through our working meeting that we have, hear everything that we need to hear, then get into public comments. So that's why we have changed that. And another reason that we've also decided to go to a thirty minutes, it's always been in our rules for thirty minutes. But we've just started sticking to that thirty minutes is because we also have employees from the school that are out here tonight. And many of you, thank you so much for showing up and thank you for being here. And some of them get up, especially our transportation department, they get up pretty early, especially if we're having snow or inclement weathers coming in. They get up early, and so I kind of see them sometimes over there like, oh, my gosh. So, but we want to just, we want to be good stewards of our time that's up here. And after the board meeting, and a lot of times, we're hearing student matters. And so we also want to get to our student matters where we have parents that are waiting for us to hear things that need to go on after the meeting. So that's the reason. That being said, tonight, we'll get into public comments. And our first person on the list tonight is Ms. Ashley Saunders. Ms. Ashley Saunders.
My name's Ashley Saunders. I'm from Broadway. And this is in regards to trans students self-harming. And I have been given permission from my son so I can once again share our story. Before my son came out as trans, a lot of things were happening at once. His father and I had affirmed him when he came out as gay, but we noticed our son wasn't eating, sleeping, or engaging like he once had. He had terrible panic attacks and was self-harming. We did all the things that parents do. We got him a therapist and psychiatrist. We asked questions and kept our door open. And we loved our son the best we could. My son didn't sleep, and I was so scared that he would text me in a moment of desperation that neither did I. I was terrified to wake him up if he slept through his alarm. And in my husband's strength, he would go into my son's room and check on him, knowing that if I found my son dead, I would never recover. But if I'm being honest, neither would he. I didn't know at the time that my son was transitioning socially, that teachers had made negative comments about trans people, that he had lost friends, and that he was being told no at every turn when advocating for his rights. He wasn't ready to come out at home because if it was that hard at school, what if home was no longer safe? He did have supportive teachers and friends, but it was still hard to figure out who would truly accept him. He knew there were some in our extended family who never would, and that is a great price to pay. And for two years, I was losing my son before my eyes. Once he came out and we affirmed him, we started advocating for him as well, and things got better. But not every child gets a safe home if they come out. But they deserve a safe school to be themselves because they can no longer hide it twenty-four-seven. They deserve access to mental health professionals at schools to help them on this journey so they can be ready to talk to their families safely because every student deserves safe adults. But with these model policies, it forces safe adults to no longer feel safe. It has been five years. My son turned twenty-one. He is thriving in his own way, and he is thriving, but he is away from this community. But I still have nightmares, and I wake up sobbing because it still feels very real and raw. And I would not wish this on another single human being. And yet, here we are enforcing a policy that does just that. When it comes to policy of outing students, self-harm and suicide are not a bug, but a feature because it is the collateral in the fight for total control. But trans and non-binary students deserve the freedom and care it takes for them to become trans and non-binary adults. And as always, trans rights are human rights, and every student deserves a safe education.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. Next on the list tonight is Olivia Frazier. What's that? Okay, I'm sorry. On the list, it just says Olivia Frazier. Did someone sign you up?
Okay, hello. I'm here today to, I don't like to speak in public, and I'm only doing it because I need to address some concerns regarding book banning, the well-being of LGBT students, and the role of our school board. The notion that banning books, the notion of banning books is anti-ethical to the principle of education and intellectual freedom. Educators and administrators have a duty to foster critical thinking and open-mindedness, not to limit access to diverse perspectives and ideas. Banning books not only stifles academic growth, but also sends a dangerous message that certain voices and experiences are unworthy of acknowledgement. Instead, let us embrace literature as a tool for empathy and understanding even when it challenges our beliefs. Furthermore, I implore the board to prioritize the safety and well-being of all students, including those who identify as LGBT. Our schools must be inclusive environments where every student feels valued and supported. It is incumbent upon us to create policies and provide resources that promote acceptance and respect for diversity in all of its forms. Discrimination and harassment have no place in our schools, and we must take proactive measures to ensure that every student can learn and thrive without fear of prejudice or harm. Finally, I urge the Rockingham County Public School Board to reflect on the proper role of a school board. While you have a responsibility to set policy and oversee administrative functions, you must also recognize the limits of your authority. The primary focus should always be on advancing the educational mission of our district and serving the best interest of our students. Engaging in ideological battles and imposing personal agendas only serves to distract from our core responsibilities and undermine public trust in your leadership. In conclusion, I ask you to reaffirm your commitment to academic freedom, inclusivity, and the principles of good governance. By upholding those values, you can ensure that the Rockingham County Public Schools remain places of learning and enlightenment for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier-Hamani, for speaking. Next on our list is Dale Arnold, Mr. Dale Arnold.
Thank you. Members of the board, Dr. Schiflett, thanks for letting me speak today. I'm Dale Arnold. I'm a member here of the community. I have two children in Rockingham Public Schools. And I just wanted to, to start off, I wanted to commend you. I haven't been here in a month or over a month, and I wanted to commend the board on dialing back the attempt at trying to instill religious ideology on the public here by rescinding your policy of opening the meetings, the school board meetings, with a prayer and by just reinjecting a moment of silence. Thank you. So that everybody can participate in that and however they wish to participate. So thank you for that. I'd like to, I implore you to use a similar amount of wisdom in rescinding the book banings that the previous member of the public just spoke to. We had a previous policy where individual parents could use their own judgment in rescinding books for their own students if they felt that if a book was in violation of their own personal code of ethics or principles. And that wasn't used, to my knowledge, that wasn't used very often, which shows that most people were okay with most of the books that were present in our libraries. And I would like you, you as the board, to consider that, when you're, when you're making decisions on how to implement these book banings. Let us decide what is better for, best for our individual children, and let us make those decisions. And please, use the same wisdom that even though you may have strong convictions, personal convictions, your convictions don't necessarily reflect everybody's in the communities. And let us make our decisions for our children, just like we would let, we would let you make those decisions for yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Next on the list tonight is Amy Funk.
It's green. Good evening, Chairman Cross and Dr. Schiflett, school board members. My name's Amy Funk, and I'm here from Broadway, and I'm here to speak on the land lab proposal support. For one, I'm a parent of two students who graduated from the MTC program. One in twenty-twenty, who is now a junior at Virginia Tech. And when he gets out, he is going to pursue a career in logistics and hopper bomb hauling, which is crane and moving agricultural products up and down the East Coast. And secondly, my other son, he graduated in twenty-twenty-three from the program, but will be a twenty-twenty-four graduate from Broadway High School this year. He has just recently accepted a position as an apprenticeship with a well-drilling company to work on agricultural wells across Rockham County, Shandau County, and Gussit County. Secondly, I am one of the owners of Brock's Gap Boar Goats, who is a host farm for the goat livestock. While this has been a very enriching experience for our family, very helpful with all the students coming in, and fun as well, it's not ideal in the long run. The necessity of the lab and a farm manager to be more hands-on, more, you know, you've got to have an individual there to see the livestock, to observe the changes, and to have opportunities there for children from K through twelve to come in and to experience agriculture life is really, really important. So with that in mind, I am inviting each of you, you can come out and visit our farm anytime the MTC kids are out there, to check it out, visit with us and our family, and asking you to support the land lab project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Funk. Next on the list tonight is Patrick Fritz.
Good evening. Jackie, always good to see you here in Broadway. In addition to Career and Technical Education Month, In addition to Career and Technical Education Month, Public School Week, it's also Black History Month. And even if the board won't say it, I'll stand here and affirm, black lives still matter. This week, all over the news, we've heard about a student in Oklahoma called Nenadict. They're a non-binary student, two-spirit. And due to the rhetoric of their extreme right-wing school board superintendent and community, this child was beaten about the head and shoulders and died. Your rhetoric killed a child. Last month, you had a public, public health official up here that told you, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And yet, despite that, you still continue these policies. You still push this through until one of our children are dead. And why, why is that pertinent to me? Because 40 feet from right here, my son, my son was kicked down the stairs. He was kicked about his head and shoulders for three minutes. Three minutes, my son was beaten right here in this hallway for the exact same reason. And you sit here and you look at me and you think I'm the bad person. No, that is you. The statistics may not move you, but until you know the fear of knocking on your child's door and not knowing if they're going to answer, then don't you dare stand up here and talk about not being moved by suicide statistics. These are children that you are killing. Children that you are supposed to be responsible for. Children here in Broadway have already died. No, no. You hush. It is my turn to talk. It is my turn to talk.
Have his time stopped. No, 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 we're not wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, just calm down for a second. Just calm down for a second. Just calm down, calm down. Your time is about to be up. I am getting ready to cancel your time. You're not displaying the rules or character counts up here. I'm asking you, I'm asking. I'm asking you to calm down. Mr. Fritz, Mr. Fritz, I'm asking you to calm down. Take a deep breath, calm down. Let's not argue, it's not back and forth. I'm just asking you to calm down. Okay, we're getting ready to stop your time. No, sir, we're getting ready to stop your time. How much time do you have left?
Irony is a literary device that highlights the difference between what is and how it appears. The irony of wearing an American flag while stomping on the First Amendment? My God, that is rich. Oh, that is rich. It does take a village to raise great kids. And my village and I have raised three amazing ones and I'm raising another one as a speech.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz, time's up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Next on the list is Dave Scott.
Good evening. My name is Dave Scott. I retired from RCPS after 17 years teaching English at Spotswood High School. Over the course of my career, I taught over 2,000 students and spent the entirety of my career working to build trust with students and encourage their love of reading, often through helping them find books that reflected their voices and their identities. Of my many achievements in education, including being named the 2018, 2019 Spotswood High School Teacher of the Year, the most important achievements are when I saw the love of reading and learning light up a student's face as they discovered themselves, their family, and their friends in a story. In almost every situation, reading provided the keys to opening the doors of understanding and acceptance in those kids, and for me, that was the magic of education. Thus, the actions of this school board disrespect every educator like me who ever stood in front of a class or library and tried to encourage a love of learning through reading. Your actions are anti-educational, squelching voices and engagement in service of a political agenda whose goal appears to be to sow chaos in public schools in order to divert public money to private schools. The rest of this is theater to placate the people duped into voting for you through this anti-educational scheme. That list of books, it didn't come from well-meaning parents within our community. It came from a discredited group that is proudly anti-inclusion, anti-tolerance, anti-empathy, and yet bizarrely still somehow brands themselves as a Christian organization. The most galling aspect of the removal of books that none of you read and the pressure to have teachers work as classroom snitches and name names is exactly the kind of bullying that we worked fervently to eradicate with anti-bullying programs throughout the K through 12 experience. Protecting the voices of oppressed marginalized students was a cornerstone in the foundation of education in RCPS. Now, to the great shame of our educational community, we find that the school board itself has become the bullies, using all the force and privilege of their offices to further marginalize and oppress those same students. Shame on this school board for spitting in my face and the face of every educator who works in a classroom to gain the trust and nourish the empathy of all students, even the ones that don't look like us or talk like us or pray like us. Shame on you for your bullying tactics in setting and enacting policy, in your interactions with teachers and librarians, and in your social media engagement with the public. This school board is anti-educational to its core. In the New Testament, Matthew tells us, "By their actions you shall know them." We see your actions and we know you, and we will resist you every inch of the way and in the end, we will defeat you.
It's Patsy Dove. Patsy Dove?
I have always believed there's two sides.
I'm sorry, your mic's not on.
I've always believed there is two sides to a story. Eight years ago, I would be thinking like the majority of the school board. You're saying you want to protect the mental health of our kids. Question, have any of you walked with someone with mental health issues caused by the bullying in schools? I have with two grandkids. Eight years ago, our nightmare started in this very school. I don't think books are causing the negative effects on mental health. Words and actions coming from kids are causing part of the issues. Adults have failed kids by teaching them to be more tolerant, not teaching them to be more tolerant of those who are slower, weaker, or simply different. Why can't we teach kids to celebrate the difference in cultures? Help those who are handicapped or born different? Accepting people without putting labels on them. I will be honest, I had to get out of my comfort zone. My granddaughter and her friends have taught me to listen and learn. What I've learned, if you don't fit in the normal box, you're a target for bullying. These kids have shown me they accept each other for who they are. You realize they're just kids trying to figure out life. Isn't it better to support someone no matter if we understand? If you listen, you can learn a lot. Kids that are bullied already have a lot more issues to deal with. People making them feel less because they were born different is causing major issues. They're not feeling safe. They're self-harming. They're contemplating suicide. Their brain is going from flight to fight. Families are just trying to keep their kids alive. But what about the kids that don't have a support system? The board's decision in January just made things worse for these kids. The book example the board is using, I agree, should not be in a school library. The example I will use is The Invisible Boy. Was this a mistake, removing the book? If so, it shows to me that you got the cart before the horse. Okay, we needed a library policy. Instead of blindsiding librarians and teachers, wouldn't it have been more sense to have their endpoint? You ask your questions, you find out what they've been doing, make a policy with knowledgeable people, then look at the books to see if they really need to be removed. Because you look from the outside, it looks like a one-sided power play. Or do you see The Invisible Boy is a problem because it's about a kid that doesn't fit in? My granddaughter is that invisible kid. Being different, she spent a lot of elementary school time playing by herself. We taught her everyone is different, just to be kind and respectful. Sixth grade, she wasn't invisible anymore, she became a target. Kids think it's okay to call her dumb, freak, weird, slut, whore, faggot, crippled bitch, barking at her, hitting her, and telling her to go kill herself. She keeps saying, "I should not be treated this way." And she's right, it's called major physical and mental damage to her. Question, would you want your kids to be treated this way? You said it's about the 11,000 kids that you need to think about. Aren't the kids that are different in that total? Policies need to be fair to all students.
Thank you, Ms. Dove. Next on the list tonight is Grayson Long.
So hello, School Board members. I was up here speaking earlier about our CTSOs in our county, but I'm also heavily involved, aside from FCCLA and FFA, and serve alongside Katie Payne, who was here earlier, as one of the Federation Vice Presidents for FFA. So one of the very unique aspects of the agricultural production class at MTC is that we offer three years of our program unlike most of the others, which are just a two-year course. So I've been involved in the MTC Agricultural Production Class all three years and seen it in many different formats. So initially, we started out sharing a farm with the Phillipses who live in Broadway, and that was where we housed all of our livestock, all of our equipment, and we would go there for our classes. And then this year, graciously, due to some difficulties, we started splitting our flock of sheep to Jackie Lour's farm and our goats are at Amy Funk's farm. And so with both of these different formats, I've seen many strengths and weaknesses of our program. Our advisor, Eric Stockdale, works very hard to ensure that our students have many opportunities, but having our own farm was a lot of stress on him to have to feed the livestock, take care of them. And also, the farm was located out here on the Broadway side of our county, making it very hard for our students at MTC from East Rockingham High School or Turner Ashby High School to travel all that way to the farm. So with the new proposal, I hope you really take into consideration, having that farm helper is crucial to make sure that there is someone to take care of the livestock and it's not all put on the weight of the shoulders of our teacher, as he does need to work on our lesson plans and things of that nature. And also, I hope you take into consideration that this facility will not only be used for our class, it'll also be a large benefit to the entire county. My family has started doing Agucation Days where we take livestock to the local schools to give children a hands-on experience with agriculture. And having this location with these animals, we can highly socialize them and then be able to transport them to these schools to hold these Agucation or Farm to School Days and make sure that all of our students are well-versed in agriculture. So I really hope you look through those plans for this new facility and take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Next on the list tonight is Kim Sandem. Did I get that right, Sandem? Thank you.
Good evening. The light's green. Okay, good evening. My name's Kim Sandem and I'm with Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley. We're a conservation organization that has been working in the valley for about 25 years. Our organization is new, but I've been here for about 25 years. As I looked at your agenda and saw that you were going to be considering the land lab, the agricultural land lab, I thought it would be worth your while to know of us as a resource and also to know about some of the resources on the ground in the area of Rockingham County. So you have a map that I passed out ahead of time. It is not all of the resources in Rockingham County, but that is the growth area that Rockingham is looking at. So the UDA or the Urban Development Area is the growth area. I wanted you to see how close some conservation easements, Civil War battlefields, Ag-forested districts, et cetera, are to that growth area. I know that you will be considering location for this lab in the future. You may also be considering location for schools, I don't know. But as you do that, I hope that you will also take into consideration other resources in the community that are valuable. I offer our organization as a partner to work with you, to let you know about some of these things. There are many other organizations as well, but I thought it would be worth your time to be aware of this. And the example that I want to leave with you, a visual image, is not many folks know that the JMU Fields, Athletic Fields at the intersection of Port Republic and NEF are actually on a Civil War battlefield. Turner Ashby Monument is at the top of that hill. The troops were moving down Port Republic Road. Both of them had the idea to sneak around in a flanking move through the woods in the hill next to the road, and they met in the woods on the hill and had a battle there. It's a real shame that that resource is now obliterated. And on top of that, the monument is more accessible and less like it's ever looked before and therefore subject to vandalism. So you have a map with some resources in front of you. There are others in the community worth considering as you do your work, and I would love to be able to talk with you further as you consider sites for this land lab or any other facility that you will be taking care of in your duties. Thank you, and I'd like to leave you my card.
Absolutely, thank you. I was going to ask you for that. We do have time for our last speaker tonight, and that's Nathan Musselman.
Hello and thank you. I'm the father of a second grader at Mountain View. First, I do want to express my respect for how much you put into this job. It's clear that we don't all agree on how to care for children, but I do believe that you do care for children, parents and our schools. If I had heard last month that the board wanted to close gaps on policies and procedures regarding school library books, I would have said, "Right on, I love policies and procedures." I was taken a bit off guard when the 57 books were removed and I wanted to learn more. Since then, I've been reading through the 57 books and I do understand better why some parents don't want their children reading some of these books. But as I've gone forward, I've gotten more and more confused as to why they were removed the way they were. And I can share some of the sentiments that have been shared already. I watched the recording of the work session with the school librarians. I was impressed by the librarian's heartfelt commitment to the safety of students and by their intentional openness to the concerns of parents. I was impressed by the institutional capacity librarians already have to honor parents' wishes regarding what their children can check out, as well as by the technological resources parents already have to know what their children do check out. I was impressed by how few book challenges there are and how amiably they are generally resolved, and I was encouraged to hear their professional understanding of the nuances of determining what is appropriate for their school libraries. It honestly left me wondering whether all four of you would have voted to remove the books if you had, if you had done that, that work session first. As far as I can tell, you removed the books first because you believed they were very dangerous. I really would like to understand you better on that point sincerely. Some of the talk about pornography and serial killers and active shooters, it's just, it's way off base, and I don't think that that kind of language serves you well or communicates to the, to the public very well. What I learned from the library work sessions was that they already have policies in place that are a good basis for moving forward, that adjusting the current classroom book challenge policy to cover library books is not a difficult task, that a bottom-up approach that trusts our librarians to make contextual... that trusts our librarians to make contextual decisions is a more fair and reasonable way than a top-down approach, that the best way to empower parents is to broaden and promote the resources and tools schools already have in place to ensure transparency and accountability for parents who are concerned about library books. I mean, is it right that only a handful of parents have enrolled in the current system-wide email alert system with which they can get notifications of what books their children are checking out? Parental rights is, is, is great, but there's parental responsibility and engagement as well. I don't much like talking at people like this, I'd really like conversation, and I hope we have some of that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musselman, for coming again tonight, and sorry for the last month, not being able to give you your time back, but once you give it up, you just can't get it back, so thank you. Last on our agenda tonight is School Board comments, and Ms. Burglone, I'm going to start with you tonight on the end.
I don't really have any comments, I apologize, I'm not feeling very well, so I don't have anything.
All right. Ms. Cave? Anything? Ms. Hurst? Ms. Lour?
I'm just wondering, do we still have any students? I know one, because she spoke twice, but do we have any other students still with us tonight? You can just raise your hand and say hi. Well, thanks to the student who stayed, and thanks to all the students who did come out earlier. And then also, just a reminder, if you haven't caught a high school musical yet, you have one more chance with Anastasia at Spotswood High School this weekend, and then we start middle school, middle school musicals, and that starts right here the following weekend. Look forward to see, I look forward to seeing the musicals, and I look forward to seeing some of you all there, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lour. Dr. Shiflett? You're good? All right, School Board members, we do have reason to go into closed session tonight, and do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the Board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lour. Any questions or comments about closed session? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. We are now in closed session. Thank you for coming tonight.